Meeting of the Spokane Public Library Board of Trustees to order for Tuesday, January fourteenth at four thirty PM. First, I'll start with our land acknowledgement. This building sits on the traditional homelands for bands of the Spokane Tribe of Indians, upper band, middle band, lower band, and Jewish. Since time immemorial, the Spokane tribe of Indians has lived and carried through these grounds, identifying themselves as flesh of the earth. We bear our respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. We show gratitude to the land, river, and people who have been fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering here for generations. May we learn from one another's stories so that we may nurture the relationship of the people of this Spokane tribe and to all those who share this. All right, there were flipboards for any visitors to sign in, and we will have public comment at the end of the meeting. And are there any proposed changes for the agenda, or should we adopt it as presented? Right, there are none, we consider it adopted. First item is approval of the May twenty twenty-two board minutes. I move that we approve the May twenty twenty-two board minutes as presented. Right, and moving seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion passes. And the second item is approval of the May twenty twenty-two bills and contributions.
I move to approve the May twenty twenty-two bills and contributions in the amount of three million, seven hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, six dollars, thirty-eight cents.
I second that. All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion passes. And now we have the board with Nicole.
Thank you so much. So for library operations for May, for our cash and investments trend, in May, we did receive our levy distribution from the county. It's expected that amount was nine hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars, and the next allocation is expected in November. So we did close the month with the ability to pay one hundred and sixty-seven days of operating costs. For our expenditure trend, in May, we had total expenditures of seven hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. Of that amount, we had interfund charges, which include second quarter, for twenty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine. Employee costs totaled five hundred and ninety thousand, and forty-nine dollars. Our books and materials were sixty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven. And we also have paid fourteen thousand, four sixty-nine in retainage for the central garage door repair. Just as a reminder, we did have somebody last fall drive through our garage door late in the evening, and we had to have that completely repaired and entered out. The total amount of that of that repair was forty-four thousand, eight fifty-six. And so we did receive an insurance claim for thirty-nine thousand, eight fifty-six. So our deductible is the five thousand, which is our public expense. For business office news, the twenty twenty-three budget process has officially begun. The question knows that, and in August. The city has accelerated their budget process again this year. We also have a new software that they launched, the L B, and utilizing that process, so stay tuned. Also, we are officially moved in and fully operating out of this facility. We're loving it, that's really great. That's a wrap for me, I'd like to ask any questions before we go on to the virtual penning.
Any questions for Nicole? All right, Penny?
Well, thank you. Well, like Nicole, and starting the budget season also for the bond, May twenty twenty-two was, it appears light in content in my report, but it was heavy, heavy volumes of paperwork. We have, May was our highest expenditure month in twenty twenty-two with over three point million dollars. Now, half of that, one point three of that was furniture, so that's representing a lot of invoice activity. And of course, our South Hill and Indian Trail branches are in swing right now, so those are moving through, and Walker and a little bit of Leone and Cable, it trickles in. I gave the public works snapshot update last month, but I've added a little, a grid for you to take a look at that. So we, in May, we had nineteen public works projects in progress, and I'm really happy to say that we closed three since I spoke with you a month ago, which is a big deal in how quickly or how slowly the state is processing everything. But that allowed us to release retainage on a number of invoices that we were holding for Open Square, and that's the company that provided our back office staff furniture and a lot of our public space furniture. So really happy with getting those things processed. There were no contracts executed under the special threshold authority, and that includes my light news for May twenty twenty-two, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Penny?
No questions, thank you, Penny.
Thank you.
All right, and next we have the bond construction project update.
Thank you. Well, here we are, my last board meeting, so it's my last update. I'm gonna be introducing Lorraine Mead in a couple of minutes, but let me give you the quick rundown here. Liberty Park and the Hive are still in closeout phase, waiting for miscellaneous materials to show up so the contractor can finish the work, and they can submit for affidavits of wages paid. Downtown Library is in closeout now as well, there's still construction work going on, lots of case work has to be put in. They just put in some guardrails on the loading dock side of the building, so there's still work going on there, but they're in the closeout phase as well. Punch lists are almost done. As Penny noted, Indian Trail and South Hill are the two libraries that have a lot of action going on right now in construction. They're taping and sanding and got electrical roughing going in. So that's kind of the big picture on the projects at this point. Any questions for me?
Questions for me? Thank you, Matt.
Matt, we just want to extend our thanks and working with you over the past couple of years, and we wish you the very best retirement. Thank you so much, you've been great to work with.
Thank you, it's been an honor. And with that, I'm gonna introduce Lorraine Mead, who is actually currently running most of the projects right now anyway. She's doing South Hill and Indian Trail, and she's taken a big part of the Central Library project over. Lorraine is a senior construction manager with Hill, she is our top-notch project manager, construction manager, and she's gonna be a great asset for you. I'm totally comfortable leaving this in her hands.
Thank you. I'm honored to be part of this.
All right, so.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, it's been an honor.
All right. Now we have the chairman's report, and there is no chairman's report, so we'll move on to the executive director.
All right, I'd like to start off with relating that we won three national awards in the past month, which is pretty amazing. One for the interior design for Special Libraries for the Hive. Been there, you will hopefully agree. That it is deserving of that award, and two awards for our very excellent marketing team. They won two PR exchange awards for the new library rack cards, right? So these are award-winning library rack cards. As well as, you know, if you recall, featured the Summer Reading Magazine last month, that is now an award-winning magazine. So excellent work on the part of marketing. They just make us look so dangerous. So thank you, team, it's awesome. And those are gonna be received at the national conference later this month. So we got a lot to be had, and probably more awards are on their way. So, all right, it's great news for the organization. Speaking of Summer Reading, we could kick that off as well, so that runs through September fifteenth. Again, we'll have that magazine for folks to pick up, there's events, the return of events this year for folks to go to. And they'll also be able to get their free book at the end, and also including a bookmark coloring contest for the summer activities. So we're looking forward to receiving lots of entries from the company. Summer STA bus pass will begin, I believe that's tomorrow, the fifteenth. So folks eighteen and under can pick up their pass and get free rides throughout the summer, through September thirtieth. That's been popular in past years, and also likely people will get a free skate through parts as well. Our star of the month, when Colleen Ashon, for their work in telephone reference. She really helped and modified and developed a monthly report for customer service issues that will help us with our service delivery system-wise. So thank you, Colleen, for that work. We also welcome two new staff members, Quinn Fredericks and Koda Yopas, that are both joining us at the library. Both with some really great retail experience that'll help us in serving the public as well. And two promotions, both at downtown or Central Library, Ashley Reese and Chad Holston were promoted recently. So congratulations to both of them. And I guess we got some big news with Central Library opening July eleventh, that's coming up very quickly. So we're working with the city right now in shutting down Spokane Falls Boulevard. We'll have food trucks, live music, and activities available throughout the day, along with the speakers that wanna be part of our celebration. We're so excited to get this facility back online after a more than two-year absence. Lots of, lots of new functionality and resources for the public to utilize. Matt had mentioned South Hill and Indian Trail, that work is coming along, it's also on track. We're looking to probably open South Hill late twenty twenty-two, Indian Trail, probably early twenty twenty-three. Which is great that we can stagger those as well. And then we've also finalized, Paul, I did a presentation last month on our live dispensers, library kiosks. We did sign up on two agreements for the locations, one at the Yokes, US one nine five, and the other at Gonzaga's family. So we're still working on two more agreements, and we're looking to install those next year. And today was the official, I guess, kickoff of the budget season. I spent all day at a budget retreat with the mayor and their cabinet. So more to come on that over the next couple of months, but we will be looking to pass our budget probably in August this year. Or, so it'll be a little bit earlier, because they wanna get the budget in front of the council sooner this year. We'll be adjusted around that. Any questions for?
Well, congratulations to the whole team, the team for their awards and for the awards. And then I actually have a question, somebody asked me whether or not the ballot drop boxes were available, that's not the.
No.
That was the answer.
Yeah, I think it's, it becomes a danger of liability.
It's a constructively, so, yeah. Any questions, any other questions for Andrew?
I have a question, did, has the city given us permission yet to close Spokane Bank for the work, or are we still working on that?
Yes, yes. So we're hoping to use that as a model for doing it more in the future. So we do have their buy-in around that, and hopefully we can activate that space a little bit more. We'll see how this one goes. And thank you, too.
All right. Any other questions for Andrew? Okay, and now we have the council liaison report, this councilman Fable with us.
Soon and long.
All right, and moving on, I have a communications report, Minnick.
Hi, tweeted up here as well. So thank you for the congratulations about the awards, we're really excited about that. And then also for Summer Reading has launched, and Skylar has organized distribution of the magazines. Throughout spoken host schools, twenty different schools, we delivered, and we're already seeing those coming home in backpacks of the kids. So she's done a great job making sure that we're reaching as many people as possible. So if you have any locations that you think could use a Summer Reading magazine, let us know, and get those there. And then, as Andrew mentioned, STA bus passes are back, and Skylar, I mean, I would just say the last two weeks have been, or week even, consolidated all of Skylar's accomplishments into this one week, where she's just doing all Summer Reading, all STA bus passes, and all note-taking for this meeting. Thanks to Skylar for making everything for our summers happen so smoothly. You'll notice the beautiful meadow landscape is looking amazing here at Liberty Park. We have gotten some comments from customers who don't understand that it's intentional, so we do have some yard signs that are coming to kind of educate customers that this is intentional, meadow grass in progress, good for pollinators, good for, you know, what, you know, not having to use a lot of water. So those are coming soon, and we also will have a couple of those at Shadle, because there are a couple of locations at Shadle, too, where we're going for a more natural landscape experience. And we'll also be doing some other communication with Liberty Park customers in email and some, maybe some pamphlets, just some rack card type things about like, what exactly is growing here and why it's good for the environment and good for us. We've run through our full supply of library cards, and we ordered, we ordered about ten to twenty thousand at a time, and we're running low. So actually, Skylar has just designed eight new library card designs, and they're all really fun. There's some new youth designs, some libraries are for everyone, I included a little thumbnail of what each of those are, pretty tiny, so if you want a bigger one, I can send that along. And then some cute sayings, as well as read translated into several different languages.
The grown-up wants this.
And a grown-up can have that one if they wanted, yes, there's one with all of the characters on it, which I expect to be very popular. And those are coming soon to all branches near you. And we had a really successful month on social media with lots of engagement around our posts on Library of Things. So we had a really great post on Library of Things about the garden tools that you can check out, and one just more generically about Library of Things. Both of them are our top engagement for the year so far, at the time of writing this report. I think we've had some other good posts recently, too, that I'll cover next month. And I wanted to mention a couple of cool things that were not in this report, but are kind of timely, is we had a great turnout at Pride. And we had a wonderful table at Pride, at the Pride Festival. And then I also wanted to point out, since we're here in Liberty Park, we have two really great book displays here that I've partnered with Jamila on to make a Juneteenth book display, because we have two Juneteenth events, I think one actually happened this past weekend, and we have one coming up, that's just in the park, it's not a library event. But wanted to make sure we were representing Juneteenth, and we, so we pulled a list of all the most recent Black and African-American author titles that we have in stock, and put them on a book display here, and we also have a Pride display here. So wanted to point those out, if you can take a peek at those on your way up. And on the DEI front, I was also selected to be on the City Council's DEI subcommittee. We're having a kickoff party or reception tomorrow at the Hive for that. So I don't quite know what that entails yet, but it's a group of people from around the community who are involved in DEI, and I felt that it would be good for the library to have a representative on that committee. And then the last thing I'll mention is that we had a really exceptional story on the front page of the spokesman on Sunday about the opening of Central. It was my first interview with that journalist, he was new, replacing the city beat, but it turned out great. And I, we got a lot of great feedback on it on our Facebook page, and also I took a peek at where it was shared on the spokesman, and it was shared. There were over five hundred and fifty likes on the spokesman Facebook page of that story. And it was shared forty-one times and commented on fifty-four times. So it had a lot of engagement on that post on the spokesman reviews Facebook page as well as on ours. Already doing a lot to get the word out that Central is opening and what people can expect there on July.
Any questions?
You probably already thought of this, but given the materials that you're creating to let people know about the natural landscape, have you thought about having some education here, some programming around that? I know that there are a couple of people who are experts at creating those, and it might be good for the public to learn how to do that.
Excellent question, we actually have, it's a coincidence, I can't take credit for it, but we do have a water-wise landscape class here at Liberty Park on the sixteenth, I believe, that's upcoming. And so we were going to include it in that, we were going to use the coincidence to our advantage and present it as an opportunity to learn more about creating water.
I think it would be great on the north, at Shadle as well.
I believe we've had one at Shadle already, but I know we do have a relationship with the water-wise landscaping arm of the city, so we can actually do more of those.
It's a good way to present every day program.
Well, I was also thinking about Jack Nisbet, who I think just is about to present at Shadle, he's a naturalist. His expertise is made of plants, and it'd be interesting to get this take on twice, and most of those are made of plants. They look like the ones I saw.
The other question I had on that, is the problem is there are people coming up and saying, why don't you follow that? Is that what they're doing?
There's a variety of comments, why don't you mow, you have noxious weeds grown here, we've checked. And they weren't included intentionally in the mix, of course.
And would it be a good idea, are these signs temporary, or are we gonna have them out there?
We're putting, so they're kind of like the campaign, they're, you know, the campaign signs with the metal. So we're gonna put out those for starters and see how those go, if those don't stay in the landscape, we'll try something more permanent.
It seems like it would be a good idea to have something permanent, because every spring you're gonna have this.
Yeah, it was something that we could execute quickly, get delivered quickly, just to get that message out there.
I was meaning like we're adding staff, especially in the environmental. June twenty-seventh, so have our own, put some own staff.
If you go from our current sign, I was immediately curious as to what was planted there, because I wanna know what's in mind. Mind-numbing to try to figure out what is actually native and what's not, and all kinds of things are noxious weeds, but then it turns out, no, they're actually a native, but just don't plant there. They're really unnecessarily noxious. So I encourage you to continue.
On the Library of Things, this isn't really a question for you, it's probably a question for somebody else out there. We got a lot of engagement on that, but did we see a spike in people checking?
I can only tell you anecdotally, I haven't looked at like the actual checkout stats, but the Library of Things display case and Shadle is far more empty than it was before. So, I didn't, yeah.
Excellent, any more questions for Amanda? All right, thank you. Now we move on to new business, Central opening marketing campaign, that's gonna be Amanda again.
You're not done with me yet. So, so we've been working with the wood shop, that's our agency that we worked with last year, we have a great relationship with them to really build out our campaign around the Central opening, and I wanted to walk you through some of the things that we have planned today. So here's a full, hopefully comprehensive list, I'm sure we'll think of other things before, before the, before the opening to add to this, but here's what we have planned at this time, so from June through August, we're gonna have social ads, we'll have vinyl messaging on the north, south, and parking garage entrance, and I'll just run through this list, and then I'll show you visuals of what all of these are. Vinyl messaging on the sidewalk, we'll have light post banners on Main Avenue, Google network display ads, social media ads. We'll also be advertising in the library linked email newsletter, and that goes to all of our customers, and it will be a detailed overview of what you'll find at Central Library. We'll have blog posts, the Facebook event, which is already live, and cross promotion with the city. And already, we're seeing some earned media as we go with the spokesman. And I expect that will pick up as we get closer to the opening. And then for print pieces, we have postcards, we included samples of those postcards for you, the Central Rack Card. We have a Central Highlights Tour booklet, sidewalk flag, which hopefully if you've been by the Central Library lately, you've seen them out in the grass. And we got those out before blooms damage, and we were for, so that we could make sure lots of people were seeing that, because we know our building is perfectly situated to get a lot of passengers by, whether, even if you're not going downtown and you're going north and south, they're gonna see things in the building. So that's why we're also planning some vinyl banners on the north and south side that are real simple, just opening soon, opening July eleventh, and then once we open, we'll switch it to one that says now open. And then after we open, we'll be able to create some content based on like video and audio that we capture during the opening. So we'll be able to make some YouTube video ads, Spotify ads, and some more social media ads to extend throughout the summer. So we don't wanna just stop promoting Central, the day we open, we need to, you know, keep that momentum going throughout the summer. And then I included this in here, so I wanted to share it with you, also with the wood shop, we're spending some of our advertising dollars on Summer Reading ads as well on social media, so that's a little bonus I listed here, so if you wanna, I'll show somebody. So these are the banners that are going on the light posts downtown, and we get the entire green section. It launches, it launches July eleventh, and DSP is a great partner for us, so they're, they're being very lenient on how long we get to keep them up there. So I don't think anybody's scheduled after us at this point, so we just get to have them, and that's why we created copy for the next one, that's not time-bound, right? It just says now, so they can stay up for quite a while. And a listing of some of the things that you'll find at Central, this is some of the vinyl that we're putting in the window, so this is the south, just the south entrance there. Some explanation of what you'll find in the building, kind of add some color to the corner. And then on these, we couldn't do the full window wrap, because we've got some of that code signage up above, so we're using those smaller, you know, squares on the bottom to again add some of our marketing language, some listings of what you'll find inside. And we'll also be adding that vinyl wrap to the entrance door that's in the parking garage, with that appearance even if you come in there. There's an example of what you'll see on the sidewalk, and, and we're really being careful to adjust the font size, so make sure that you can read it when you're sitting at the stoplight there at Lincoln, aye? And here's an example of the social ads that you'll see, some people you'll recognize. Then, so these are all social ads, and then some display ads, so this is what you see, you know, if you're on the website, you can view the one on the side. Here's the postcard, we've got the print version on, and the rack card. And then here, this is a twenty-four-page booklet that will be a tour, kind of a tour, a self-guided tour of the Central Library. So people will go and take this up, walk through, and this is just a selection of a few of the pages that will be included, but it's twenty-four pages. These are the vinyl banners, so Central Library opens July eleventh, they're six feet long and two and a half feet tall, and we're placing them on the north and south side, so you'll be able to see these coming over Monroe Street Bridge and coming down Lincoln. And then there's a little snapshot of the banner installed in the grass outside. And here are some sneak peek of the Summer Reading ads as well, so those are social ads, and these are social stories ads that will be on Facebook and Instagram story.
You just wanna pick up your award for twenty twenty-three.
Amanda, those sidewalk banners, can you see them from inside the sidewalk?
They're not double-sided, so I guess I figure if you're already on the side of the sidewalk, you already are going to the library, you already know it's open, yeah. So it's really just trying to catch the people who are sitting in their cars, if we can look down the street.
Are the vinyl, are those permanent?
They're semi-permanent, we're not putting any dates on there that can like, that will limit how long we want them up there, but I don't expect they'll be up there forever, but. Up there for a few months.
There are banners already out there, is that a coming soon banner?
The, the, the flags in the ground?
Maybe that's what.
Those are, those, there's one that says opening July that we'll probably take down, but the rest of them are, like, they're not timed. Those are, those, there's one that says opening July that we'll probably take down, but the rest of them are time, like, they're not time bound either. We can leave them up, because they're like Play at River Rumpus. Okay. But yes, those are already out.
So exciting.
All right, now we have the meeting room policy and procedures update. That's Paris and Amanda as well.
Thank you. So as we've been constructing and opening our new buildings, we've added a heck of a lot of meeting rooms. We've gone from about six or seven, depending on how you look at it, to what are we at?
Fifty-seven. We'll have fifty-seven total.
Fifty-seven. And there's a reason for that. I mean, we added all of these spaces, because it's what people indicated that they wanted during our initial bond outreach. But with all of these new spaces that we have to deal with, we decided it was time to revisit our policy. People were wanting to use these spaces for all types of purposes, for study, for business, for education. And our current policy doesn't really allow for the full spectrum of usage that we expect. So the policy itself is mostly unchanged. You're still seeing the language about it being accessible to everyone, about no illegal activities being allowed, no discrimination being allowed. But you'll see two fairly significant changes in there. One is the removal of the administration section, which was replaced by a fee schedule and a procedure. And we also added extinction in the policy between commercial and non-commercial use. So basically, what we're trying to allow for now is the ability for commercial users to rent our spaces when it's appropriate. We wanted to figure out a way that we could let businesses and other for-profit uses take advantage of the spaces while still keeping them open and available to the general public and for nonprofits for free. So you'll see, that's the significant change in the policy. And in the fee schedule, you will see the rates that we have come up with for each of the different locations that people can rent. And we have a, we've got a fairly detailed procedure behind this that helps us distinguish between commercial and non-commercial uses. So that specifically, commercial use is focused on events that are charging admission fees, selling tickets, support, soliciting donations. So it's basically when you're using the room for the purpose of generating money, that you would be required to pay one of these rental fees. We have the, we have in the procedure that the ability to waive those fees for nonprofit organizations who are raising money for charitable purposes. But chiefly, what we're looking at here are the commercial for-profit uses. And in order to facilitate and maximize the use of these spaces, we're bringing on a new staff member that Amanda can tell you about.
Well, I can. We've offered and had a person accept the position. I'm not going to say her name, because I don't know if she's given her notice yet. But we're excited for her to start at the beginning or end of July, I guess it is, with all the summer plans that we have going on, so end of July. And she will be the liaison in managing these special events that maybe require a little bit more customer service than just coming in, unlocking the door and using the room as you would if you were using it for like a free.
She also will be involved with Vinyl City Live.
Potentially, yeah, for special events like that, yes.
The fee schedule that we're looking at was based on the survey of other libraries who offer this kind of service, as well as looking at rental rates around town. We wanted to be, you know, quasi-competitive, so that we didn't become just the cheapest place in town. But also, we did want to be a lower barrier than some of the other places, so that smaller businesses could still take advantage of our spaces without being priced out, essentially. So our, what we're asking is that the board approve these changes to the policy and the fee schedule. Does anyone have any questions that we can answer about those?
I do have a question. In paragraph, on the second paragraph on the second page, it says free of charge for non-commercial use. And then it, let's say for a nonprofit, if they are going to be collecting donations or doing fundraising, would the rental of that room still be free? Or because they're taking donations or raising funds, would there be a charge for that?
So we have in our procedure the ability to work with them on determining whether it would be charged or not. Basically, we could see a couple of different scenarios. So during this process, we created a bunch of flow charts to try to help ourselves understand how each different use case would be interpreted. And there are a few cases where a nonprofit entity might be raising money for purposes that are essentially for profit, for the profit of that, of that company. So we wanted to make sure that we still have the ability to charge those folks. But for, by and large, for a nonprofit, raising funds for charitable purposes, we have the ability to give no, no fee for that.
I do love a good flow chart. So, so let's say that a nonprofit, let's say something like Safety Net, came and they said, we're, we're gonna have a breakfast where we're gonna be talking about our mission, and we're gonna ask people to pay for their breakfast. Is that on your flow chart?
Not that specific. But we did, we did look at similar use cases. And so what we tried to figure out is, you know, first off, is it going to disrupt the usage of the library? Yes or no? If it does, then it automatically bumps into an after-hours event, which has its own service charges associated with it, right? And then we go through, actually, let me see if I can pull up one of those flow charts, and maybe I've got an answer for you right now. So we said fundraisers.
Amanda, we saw.
Yeah. I think, I mean, a lot of the philosophy around this is we don't want to create a barrier for people we already have relationships with that are doing events with us, or for nonprofits who are doing fundraisers. It's more to provide an opportunity for commercial entities, which right now, we say you can't even do that, right? So we're providing an, a way in for them to use our rooms as well. Typically, it will be outside of business hours, where they wouldn't be taking the room from somewhere else, because they probably might create, it could create a disruption, because some of these will be larger types of events.
Sure.
So the way I think of it is three different kind of buckets of events. We've got the free events that we already have, or the free room usage that people already use the rooms for, that they're not charging anything for. They're having birthday parties, they're having small events. There's the library events where we are putting on programming and need the rooms for those programs. And then there's this new category that we're adding that's for commercial usage. I mean, I don't know where the percentage will lie for how much each of these will be, but I imagine at first, this will be a smaller percentage. It's just being able to, to accommodate people who want to sell tickets or sell merchandise in the room. Or have a wedding, or have a large wedding at a weekly at Hall overlooking the river. Those are the types of things that we would charge, and we'd want the event coordinator to be able to help liaise with having liquor license or whatever, whatever other details are going to go into that. Part of why we need a specific person to be able to coordinate those, because it's outside of the area of expertise of our regular staff.
Oh, but Central Library is so beautiful and so spacious. I have a feeling a lot of people are gonna want me to say that. And I know that it's gonna be, it's, it's going to take some, some process or judgment to figure out just how that's gonna work, so.
Yeah, absolutely. The, I found my flow chart.
Yay.
In analyzing people who might fall into one of these, when we're trying to determine the category, first off is we determine whether it will disrupt normal library operations, which takes it to an after-hours event. Or if it does not disrupt, then we ask ourselves, is spoken local library a partner on this event? And if they, if we are a partner, then there's no fee assessed. If we're not a partner, then we determine which type of room they'll be in, because we're not charging anything for study rooms. But if it's going to be in a meeting or event space, then we finally ask, is it going to be commercial or non-commercial use? And that's the point where we jump over to our commercial and non-commercial use definitions in our procedure, which are going to probably evolve over time. And right now, we've got a, a pretty lengthy description of what each, of what non-commercial specifically connotates. But in our commercial use section, it says that the rental fee may be waived when a service or club or other not-for-profit group is fundraising for charitable purposes.
Got it. Okay. And my last question, I see that, that we do address political purpose meetings. And again, campaign fundraising, is that something then that is covered yet? What we've been charging or not?
Yeah, so campaign fundraising is specifically considered a commercial activity based on our definitions.
Good, thank you.
So the commercial, it says that if it doesn't involve fees, donations, or for-profit, what if it's, if it's a business that wants to use the room, but not charge anything or try to be fundraising, is that automatically considered commercial?
So when we, what we address that specifically in the procedure also, where it says activities of for-profit businesses that are not oriented toward making a direct profit, such as staff meetings and trainings, are considered non-commercial uses. So just because you're involved with the business and you want to use the space, doesn't mean that you're using that space for commercial purposes.
So let's say if my organization wanted to do DEI training, that would be considered non-commercial.
Unless you're charging your employees to come to it, for like a special, no, right? But if you're doing a special training that you have to pay to come to, then it would become commercial.
Makes sense.
And can you just clarify, did, did we charge anything now for our meetings?
We don't allow any commercial usage right now, and that's the big difference.
But there's some current amendment that you need to make to the schedule.
Oh, I'm sorry. So one thing that I realized that we had liked to put on here, in our old policy, we had a $45 cleaning fee for people who left the rooms messy. And I would like to also add that to the fee schedule, and we will add it. So with your approval of this, we'll include the event of the fee schedule.
Same, same amount, 45?
I was gonna ask, ask that question. Where do we know what the service fee is? I also wanted to ask about the, the statement here, the library may elect to provide notification to the general public about the provision of activity for the public size of any upcoming meetings, if the event is mission aligned. So I want, I read that, I'm not sure what that means. Does that mean mission aligned with the library? And then also, is this like, we're gonna put, we're deciding, is the library deciding whether to put it on our calendar or not on our calendar, or is it more than that? Anyway, I just want to hear more about this idea of the library potentially.
That actually is in our existing policy already. And it's just the idea that we do not promote library events. If you're having an event in the meeting rooms, we don't promote those, and sometimes people assume you're going to put it on the calendar. But sometimes somebody's having an event in here, and it's like the Waterwise event, and we say, hmm, that seems like an event that makes sense for the library. Basically, we become a partner on the event, and we co-sponsor the event. And it's really like, it just opens, it protects us from having to promote things that we're not mission aligned with. And then, but allows us to pick and choose if something comes up that makes sense for us to promote and partner on there.
I think this is really good. I've had people in the business community who have said, wow, you know, the library, a level-up space, and wouldn't it be cool to be able to do something there, you know, with the intention that it's supposed to be about connecting when customers are connecting with employees? Or, you know, that, that is really probably a commercial use, but, but the facilities are so nice, and we should be able to share them.
Under, when it says studio, for instance, at Central, is that the recording studio, or the video studio, or any, or all, any studio?
So that would be, the studio is one of the maker studios that we've got the aprons that we have throughout the program.
We don't have any fees planned associated with the media studios.
With the media studios, we've got a whole other community service scheme up our sleeves in order to get compensation for volunteer hours, I think, in exchange.
I believe that we approved the updates to the policy on meeting room use and the meeting room and facility use schedule with the $45 cleaning fee. All right, if they moved, and second, is there any other discussion? All right, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
So with all of this, I've been informed that this room is booked at 5:30. So I'd ask that we can bump our music specialist presentation till next month, and you can check out the space afterwards.
Thank you very much.
And my apologies, Andy.
Okay, so with that amendment to the agenda to move this presentation for the next meeting, that will be the, well, that covers us on 13 as well, that's an agenda change. Is there anyone signed up for public comment?
I will check online.
Okay, excellent. That's right, okay. And the next regular meeting will be Tuesday, July 19th, at the Central Library.
Can I suggest that you check and see if anybody has that reserved?
Hey, you only make this to say.
And there is no executive session, so with that, the library meeting, please adjourn.